Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. You will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, never to be just for all.
As complied with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, and posted on the Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on special event applications with the Recreation Director, Alicia Floyd.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are six applications before you this evening. Three are returning, three are new. The new applications are from Toluas to do an event where a truck will be parked in front of their establishment selling items. Second one is for Colbert One Bike Blessing in Springwood Park, and the third one is for the Levy Wedding Lunch, which will actually be held at McLeone's, but they want to use Atlantic Park for a bike valet. Are there any questions on the applications?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. We're now on to matters from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Erickson.
I just wanted to say, I hope all that you lovely ladies had a wonderful Mother's Day, and I wanted to thank Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton and also Ms. Cassandra Dickerson. They had, the city sponsored a Mother's Day tea, and if you didn't attend, you missed out on something really fantastic. And Councilwoman Clayton said they were going to have another one, and our deputy mayor was also there. We had such a wonderful time, so we're looking forward to having tea and little cakes and McLeones all next year, and I hope to see all of you there. So, thank you, Councilwoman Clayton.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes, this Saturday, the 17th, is the last day that the Quality of Life and the Department, DPW, are sponsoring dumpsters. It's going to be located on Bond Street between Fifth and Sixth. The hours are 10 to 4, so here's your opportunity if you're uncluttering. Thank you. Between Sunset and Fifth. So if you're uncluttering, getting ready to stuff, doing spring cleaning, here's your opportunity. Please come out and use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, moving on, matters from the acting city manager?
Nothing, thank you.
And matters from our city attorney?
Nothing for me.
All right. Thank you. We are now into public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Good evening. My name is Gabriella Cuccinata. I'm at 209 Sixth Avenue. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. So, we were made aware of the infrastructure improvement plan that is going to negatively impact our home and the homes of all the residents that live between Sixth and Eighth Avenue, between Kingsley and Webb Street. Our house is a historic house that has existed with very, very few modifications for more than 130 years. We still have beautiful bluestone sidewalks surrounding our property. While we are trying to digest the plan, and we don't quite understand it, to tell you the truth, because it's really, it's not explained, but we looked at it today, it is clear that widening of the streets to allow angle parking that actually reduces, on our side of the street, the parking spaces by one, will take about 10 feet of our front lawn. This takes the sidewalk, then, almost like up to our front porch. This plan will put our porch closer to the street, impacting our quality of life, reducing the impermeable surfaces in the area, and increasing the flood risk to our property by removing important lawn area and placing our house closer to the street. All of this will have negative impact on our property value of our house. So, we want to know, why were the residents not informed? We are asking for a public meeting for all the citizens of Asbury Park to be allowed to weigh in on the plan and to at least have a discussion on how it should be revised, or if it can be revised. We are asking the city not to increase impermeable surfaces by widening Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth avenues, and increase the heat island effect that's already just happening by the massive construction in the area. We are asking the city not to reduce the front lawns of property owners along Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Avenue. We want the sidewalk in front of our house to be bluestone. Bluestone has survived 130 years. You can't say that for concrete, and it's still beautiful. People comment on it all the time. We want no changes to our property lines on Webb Street. It says that our retaining wall will be rebuilt from the plan. I'm not quite sure why that is necessary. We do pay $1,000 a year to rent back right away in that area. We want that not to be touched. So many residents in the area and visitors that come, walk by our properties, comment on just how much they enjoy seeing the flowers and how beautiful the property is. The changes will actually negatively impact that. It'll impact our gardens. It just impacts the look of our house. So, these, we just think that overall, just not at our property, but for all of the other properties in the area, it's going to have a negative impact, and we just would ask that you consider at least having a public meeting. When there are property, construction in place, you have to notify the owners, and I'm just shocked that there was no formal presentation or notification sent out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and what you just said just came to our attention, I'm going to say, 15 minutes ago. So, not prepared to give you an answer now. We will look into it. If need be, there will be a meeting, because I'm not sure if you're talking about the city right of way, your property or anything.
It is, it is the city right of way.
Oh, it is the city right of way.
But it goes 10 feet into my property.
Okay, so, that could be part of the problem, but let us look into it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? When you say the plan, are you referring to 2002 waterfront redevelopment plan?
No, I'm talking about the infrastructure improvement plan that's dated, frankly, it's...
August 2024?
August 2024. It's how many pages, Ben?
34, page 35.
35 pages. It's titled, "Infrastructure Improvement Plan, Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment, Block 4201, 4306, Infrastructure Including Blah, Blah, Blah." It's dated...
August 24?
Yeah.
Did you send one of us that plan? Gabrielle has her email.
So, we can't send it by email, because Mary got it from, where did Mary get it from?
I got it from James. James has it.
It's the construction development plan, it's not the improvement redevelopment plan.
It's a different plan.
Is this the infrastructure that's in the redevelopment plan, but this is the engineering documents?
It's probably the infrastructure repairs, infrastructure upgrades.
This is bump outs and everything else.
That are not, that come from originally the 2002 plan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Velino, 1700 Webb Street. First of all, I want to thank you all for what you do, as always, and the response. Eileen, thank you last week. Got back with me on an item. Picking up where we left off here with Gabrielle, this waterfront plan, again, dated last year, August of 24. It did make a notification, and it listed all the people within 200 feet of this program, but there was never any notification, and on January 27th, a no-use sign went up, and we are now living four months with Webb to Kingsley being unusable and unparkable. Question one, will it be done by summertime Memorial Days, right around the corner, so question there. The plan also shows to the point, taking land, including 1700 Webb Street, we currently have about 50 by 30 of lawn, and my understanding from reading the plans is that we're going to lose 25 feet from the current curb line coming up into our property line. It's going to leave us about 10 feet off our building. Not, really not what we're looking for here. It also calls for 6 and 1/2 to 7 and 1/2 foot sidewalks. We are not Manhattan, where we have 100,000 people walking our sidewalks, so again, a consideration. It also calls for a 16-foot island to be put on Eighth Avenue. There are 25-foot curb cuts for the Delta and the Views. These are projects that are on the board, pretty much being approved at this point. They did not allow for green space, so that island ultimately is going to be nothing more than a dog relief island, to be very frank. There's no more grass left up there. There's also calls for a drainpipe to come down Webb Street. I think today we looked at, I don't know, another 12, 14 sewers, which are necessary. Will we be rebuilding the platform on Webb Street, since we're running a big old pipe into it? Again, your consideration there. So, we're losing green space. Cars will be parked basically at our front doors at this point, so please consider reading that plan, and maybe we can hear more about the impact. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything, James?
I would just say that the improvements that are planned, were planned as part of the infrastructure proportion of the master plan, the redevelopment plan, the plans that they're referring to are the engineering drawings of those improvements that are now taking place. That's why the dates are different, but these are what was decided in the plan back in, it doesn't change.
Okay, and this work's ongoing now?
Yes, this is the work currently going on in Kingsley, Seven, Eight, and a little bit of Webb, but yes, yes.
And was it going to be, was it going to be done before the summer?
I don't know. This is Starfield doing the work. I'm not sure what their schedule looks like.
Well, I'm not big on holding anything in the waterfront during the summertime to begin with, so we'll look into that. Let us get some more information, and we'll get back to you, and if need be, we could have two councilpeople, the engineer, people from Starfield, meet here. It's a good day and time with you guys. Give us a couple days to figure it out.
Thank you.
I'm Frank Cuccinata, 209 Sixth Avenue. I want to follow up with what my wife had talked about, as there was just a little bit of rain today, and with the infrastructure improvements that's going on, we had, for the little bit of rain, the streets were flooded. We even had to tell our neighbors or our residents upstairs to move their car, because the water was coming up to the bottom of their door, and it was going to flood their car. And there was no notice that, hey, you know, you might be impacted, move your car. It's like, nothing, you know, so, and that was just a little bit of rain. But we've always had a problem with drainage in that area, and with less land to absorb it, we're going to even, we're going to have even more problems. So, I think there's a problem there. The other thing is, we're, with the sidewalk and the everything moving closer to our house, we're going to have, we're potentially going to have some water flooding in our basement. We currently don't have flooding in our basement, but when you bring everything in toward our house, we're concerned that we're going to have some flooding in the basement, and that's not what we have now, and we'd like it to stay that way.
Totally agree with you, and, but the only thing I disagree with is saying that we had a little bit of rain today, because where I live on Fourth Avenue, it poured all day. And again, I'm not making light of the situation, like, the past three years, it's been fall, winter, rain, and summer. We no longer have a spring. We have rain this whole, like, two months, so it has been a killer. I'm sure anything that's been planned, has been planned, so there is good drainage. Again, let us get together, figure out city right of way, whose property, and exactly what's being done, and we will have some type of meeting. You know, just bear with us a couple days till we can get everybody, all the players together, which means getting Starfield together, getting our engineer, is Jay Harzold?
Yes.
Running this for us?
Yes.
Okay. We can talk to him, and we can start the process, but it's not going to be within 24 hours.
No, that's...
Okay.
Ben Hall, 307 Sixth Avenue. Just wanted to follow up on Frank's thing about the drainage. I think it was Monday I came home, and again, it's been raining a lot, but I noticed the same thing. There was just a lot of water in the street around our houses. I'm half a block from him. So, I drove around the neighborhood, and just up Webb Street to Seventh and Webb, and Eighth and Webb, and all of the storm drains were clear, and there was no water in the street, and it was just around that intersection of Sixth and Webb. So, I called Public Works, and they said somebody would go look at it, but more immediate, because it has been raining a lot, and I know that all of these other questions aren't going to be solved, you know, anytime in the next couple days, but just if someone could look into the drainage there, because it has been raining a lot, it is going to rain a lot, and the storm drains aren't working now at that intersection. My basement flooded two years ago in that crazy rainstorm. Cost me a bunch of money. Everybody else has things to lose if things flood, and the drains, as they are right now, are not working, so I know they'll be improved, but if somebody could look at that ASAP, I think we'd all appreciate it.
Okay. John, can we have DPW check that every day?
Yep.
And maybe it's because...
The address again?
I'm 307 Sixth Avenue, but it's, the storm drains at the intersection of Sixth and Webb.
Got it.
They have, like, those metal, they've been welded plates over them, you know, to stop stuff from getting in there, so I don't know if that has something to do with it, but it was just obvious. I keep going, I was like, I know it's raining a lot, but it's not raining now, there's a lot of water here, and then I drove around the neighborhood, and all the other storm drains were clear, there was no other water against her, and just around that intersection, it was like this. And I'm like, if that's what's happening with a little bit of rain, if the rain comes down again, my basement's going to flood again now.
Something tells me the new storm drains haven't been hooked up yet.
Yeah, something...
Right, so, this is going to sit there or else go there, so yeah, so if we have DPW check it every day with this rain?
Yeah, because I drove all the other adjacent intersections, everything was clear, there was no water in the gutters, the storm drains were working, and just at Sixth and Webb, they were all full and not draining, so I don't know what's going on, but...
They said they were covered because they, because of the soil work, they didn't want soil to get into the storm drains, so they covered it with, like, cloth fabrics to keep it, and not cause the flow to really decrease.
Which is?
I think it's a notification so that they're going to increase flood risk, it would be good to...
Which is?
There has to be a solution that balances us not flooding and them not getting very difficult.
And to cover them with a black cord cloth is standard operating procedure, but not when it's starting to back up, then you take it off and they let it go down, just to get the water out.
Exactly.
Yes. So, yes, okay, that will be done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Peretti, 305 Sixth Avenue. To follow up on what Ben said, numerous times over the years, I have taken my own rake and cleaned out leaves and garbage and cans in order to keep the flow of the storm drain open. So, if the city could have some of their DPW workers, whenever there's rain coming, to just go to the corner of Sixth and Webb, and also the western part of Sixth and Webb, and then there's another drain also, almost in front of Frank and Gabrielle's house, that where the water accumulates as well. And when it rains really heavy, constant as it is now, in front of my house is like a river. I'm right next to Ben, and it's like a river. In reference to the architectural, the architect's plans for the new infrastructure, of the new sidewalks they're putting in, I was on Kingsley, yeah, I was on Kingsley, made a, make a right on Sixth. There's a new bump out, out there, and it sticks out a lot. I don't know who came up with that idea to make that concrete bump out so, out into the roadway, but I'm sorry, but that's, it should have been left as it was, so people can make a proper right turn onto Sixth Avenue, because as it is now, you can barely see the curb, so you got to go, like, way out to make a right on Sixth. So, anyway, the concrete, the new concrete sidewalk, sidewalk, no, not sidewalk, curb, has already been installed, so maybe it's a mute point, but I guess it's, maybe they can study it going further. I hope a traffic study was done on that, because it just doesn't seem normal. It doesn't seem like a natural way of driving. That's it.
In the August 24 plan that you brought to our attention, bump outs were approved for that end of town. Originally, the council was against bump outs. Bump outs have been proven to save people's lives, because it's the less part of the street they have to cross, so we've added bump outs to that area. You're correct. Now, how far they're sticking out, I'll take a ride down there tomorrow, but I'm sure they got to meet every type of standard by, you know, DOT and everything. Okay, but thank you.
And you might be interested to know that the Green Team also started an adopted drain program, so if there's a storm drain in your neighborhood that you'd like to help maintain, you can fill it out on the city's website and help make sure that those storm drains are clear, so that debris doesn't go into the lakes.
Pay your taxes and do our work also.
Can we get a rebate?
No, but you'll have clean streets.
I agree. Thank you. Any others like to be heard? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes for the April 23rd, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2025 to 14 through 2025 to 19. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to individual resolutions. I have resolution 2025 to 20, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025 to 21, resolution authorizing the purchase of janitorial supplies for the Beach Department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 22, resolution identifying of menu items as per the subsequent developer agreement between the City of Asbury Park, Madison Asbury Retail LLC, and Asbury Partners.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 23, resolution authorizing emergency heat repairs needed at the Senior Center.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 24, resolution authorizing payment for emergency bypass rental needed at Deo Lake.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 25, resolution authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs needed, oh, apologies, I, no, yes, emergency sewer pairs were needed at Deo Lake.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 26, resolution authorizing the emergency influent pump repairs needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 27, resolution authorizing payment for emergency influent pump repairs needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 28, resolution authorizing the purchase of a new fire department vehicle and related equipment needed.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 29, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Veritone Redact application software for the Police Department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 30, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Thera Manager Prosperity EHR software for social services.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 31, resolution amending the contract with Shorepoint Architecture for services at the new Fire Department Headquarters.
Move it.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025 to 32, resolution awarding a, of a contract to Millennium Communications Group for security upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 33, resolution authorizing T&amp;M Associates, the Oversight, Grant Management, and General Coordination Services of the Madison Asbury Retail LLC Paramount Theater Restoration Project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 34, resolution authorizing construction phase inspection services to T&amp;M Associates for the Transportation Alternatives Program, Main Street, Streetscape Improvements Project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 35, resolution authorizing construction phase inspection services to T&amp;M Associates for the safe routes to transit, intersection upgrades, and traffic signal installation at Cookman Avenue and Bond Street.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025 to 36, resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the city's Community Development Block Grant annual action plans for fiscal years 2019, 2020, 2022, 2023, and